Okay, sounds on.
Here's the name. What? I don't, doesn't make any difference.
Do you tell me should have? Who did you give those packets to? I just had a little camera.
Just Tamara.
I don't know.
For the board, we showed it in general.
Is that one there? I made your substitute. No, it's not a good one. I think it's still in there.
Oh, no, that would've been a good one. I think it's still in there. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I can get on.
What about the COVID?
I did play a couple really interesting.
We have a COVID back.
I don't want to admit that.
Can you get on? Okay.
Here's another packet right here. I'll give it to you.
Okay. That's fine. Hello, John. Oh, yeah. Okay. So, everything's going to be disconnected. So, you can't email me, can't call me, can't nothing. Everything's going to be disconnected.
You're still getting one way or the other.
I'll have no, I'll have no, sir.
Does that mean anything? People sends you, just goes to the trash and you don't have to get to it later?
Right. He said something to me. What's going on here? I guess it's because I'm a big... That's okay. So, you don't want to get what's wrong? Unhuh. Then he's going to call the doctor. Then he's going to call the doctor. So, then he took my agenda and all the descriptions.
I can get it.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody ready?
We're ready.
Are you guys all up? Roger. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. So, first thing, approval of the agenda. Is there any additions working?
No.
Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Chad, second by Tamara. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And approval of the July minutes. Any changes from the board? Done, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Motion by Ryder, second by Tamara. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And treasures report. And as an attachment, any questions, comments? Done, entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Allison. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And invoices. Any comments or questions, or any that we need to go over?
No, they're a little bit high because, you know, we had to pay 50% of the INA, the security and so forth that was approved previously, but we had to come up with 50%, which at this point, we haven't got our plan approved. Then we had to do our insurance, which was really high, too. So, those two items are the vast majority of those invoices. What was the insurance on?
158.
158 was just the insurance. So, that was out of the 324. So, it was a little bit inflated with those two big ones on there this time.
When are they supposed to start off?
They said the material should be here on August 17th for that. For INA.
Yeah. Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And reconciliation.
That was an attachment as well. The cash summer report, any cash balance matches the cash in the fee, which matches the treasures report that Stephanie prepared. And just so you know, darling came in and helped her with it. It took them a little while because the summer ones are always so much more difficult than during the year. But I told her not to get discouraged, it'll get better as time goes on. But she did her fine job, so it could kind of work out fine.
And again, on the SRR, cash balance is pretty large negative because we haven't been approved yet. So, and any title federal is a reimbursement, so you can run negative in those funds. We have discussed because they, at this point, it looks like we will not get that through till October now because they did not get it in this budget. So, hopefully, we'll get it approved in, and we can access it in October. We probably got to request state aid to cover cash, just for cash flow, other than that.
And that's Fund 78 on that, our summer. You can see that's in the negative. So, that INA alert came out of there, summer school came out of there, after-school program came out of there. So, yeah.
I'm still working on, I had to do three altercations without really a lot of information. So, you know, I gave them some information and so forth. So, hopefully, we get it approved this time.
Thank you. And any other questions?
Nobody.
And COVID protocol?
So, kind of after school nurses, just to kind of see because we thought parents would have questions about. Protocol, as you can see, it's pretty, you know, it's same vaccinated or unvaccinated. Recommendation, five days isolation if you have it. If you don't have symptoms or fever, return. Mask is optional if you want to do that. Contact tasting is responsibility of a positive person, not the school district. We will send you home if you have symptoms, but we will offer if they want to test to stay or test to play, we have that ability. So, at the request of the parents.
And last year, this was like three pages long, so...
I was going to ask if this is different.
Way different, way shorter.
Way shorter.
There's not, other than five days, it's bad.
I'll move to approve. Second. Motion, second?
Second, let's...
Chad.
Chad, thank you.
Any further discussion? Done, all favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And SRR three.
So, I kind of reviewed a little bit of that, just of those cash balances. But so, I had to respond to, they did not have a response to our underserved kids, homeless, at risk. And so, we really didn't identify those in our 83 responses we got back. So, I just had to say, they are within our 83 responded. So, I had to copy that and put it into a different line item on the narrative. And then also, they wanted to know, on the 20% for loss of learning, I had to identify research-based criteria that we were using to determine kids' loss of learning and so forth. And I had to use our, all of our things like FastBridge. What else? I can't remember off the top of my head what we used besides FastBridge, but...
Probably Lexia.
Lexia reading, yeah. Pathways to reading.
Pathways to reading.
So, I had, and those are research-based, so I had to add those. And then they, because it said fate detectors on that one deal, so I just took it off. That was going to be a problem. Just left the description. So, those are the three things I changed on the application. Hopefully, it'll get approved. They called me two hours after we missed getting on the state board's agenda because noon was the cutoff. They called me like 2:00.
Yeah.
And I said, you missed it, so we got to wait another month. So, hopefully, we'll get it approved and we'll go through that. So, that's where we are, the 595. They challenged the INA alert, and it was a pretty large piece of that 595, so.
Okay. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Roger.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Roger.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Allison. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And invoices. Any comments or questions, or any that we need to go over?
No, they're a little bit high because, you know, we had to pay 50% of the INA, the security and so forth that was approved previously, but we had to come up with 50%, which at this point, we haven't got our plan approved. Then we had to do our insurance, which was really high, too. So, those two items are the vast majority of those invoices. What was the insurance on?
158.
158 was just the insurance, so that was out of the 324. So, it was a little bit inflated with those two big ones on there this time.
When are they supposed to start off?
They said the materials should be here on August 17th for that. For INA.
Yeah. Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And reconciliation.
That was an attachment as well. The cash summer report, any cash balance matches the cash in the fee, which matches the treasures report that Stephanie prepared. And just so you know, darling came in and helped her with it. It took them a little while because the summer ones are always so much more difficult than during the year. But I told her not to get discouraged, it'll get better as time goes on. But she did her fine job, so it could kind of work out fine.
And again, on the SRR, cash balance is pretty large negative because we haven't been approved yet. So, and any title federal is a reimbursement, so you can run negative in those funds. We have discussed because they, at this point, it looks like we will not get that through till October now because they did not get it in this budget. So, hopefully, we'll get it approved in, and we can access it in October. We probably got to request state aid to cover cash, just for cash flow, other than that.
And that's Fund 78 on that, our summer. You can see that's in the negative. So, that INA alert came out of there, summer school came out of there, after-school program came out of there. So, yeah.
I'm still working on, I had to do three altercations without really a lot of information. So, you know, I gave them some information and so forth. So, hopefully, we get it approved this time.
Thank you. And any other questions?
Nobody.
And COVID protocol?
So, kind of after school nurses, just to kind of see because we thought parents would have questions about. Protocol, as you can see, it's pretty, you know, it's same vaccinated or unvaccinated. Recommendation, five days isolation if you have it. If you don't have symptoms or fever, return. Mask is optional if you want to do that. Contact testing is responsibility of a positive person, not the school district. We will send you home if you have symptoms, but we will offer if they want to test to stay or test to play, we have that ability. So, at the request of the parents.
And last year, this was like three pages long, so...
I was going to ask if this is different.
Way different, way shorter.
Way shorter.
Yeah, it was like three pages.
Other than five days, it's bad.
I'll move to approve. Second. Motion, second?
Second, let's...
Chad.
Chad, thank you.
Any further discussion? Done, all favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And SRR three.
So, I kind of reviewed a little bit of that, just of those cash balances. But so, I had to respond to, they did not have a response to our underserved kids, homeless, at-risk. And so, we really didn't identify those in our 83 responses we got back. So, I just had to say, they are within our 83 responded. So, I had to copy that and put it into a different line item on the narrative. And then also, they wanted to know, on the 20% for loss of learning, I had to identify research-based criteria that we were using to determine kids' loss of learning and so forth. And I had to use our, all of our things like FastBridge. What else? I can't remember off the top of my head what we used besides FastBridge, but...
Probably Lexia.
Lexia reading, yeah. Pathways to reading.
Pathways to reading.
So, I had, and those are research-based, so I had to add those. And then they, because it said fate detectors on that one deal, so I just took it off. That was going to be a problem. Just left the description. So, those are the three things I changed on the application. Hopefully, it'll get approved. They called me two hours after we missed getting on the state board's agenda because noon was the cutoff, and they called me like 2:00.
Yeah.
And I said, you missed it, so we got to wait another month. So, hopefully, we'll get it approved and we'll go through that. So, that's where we are, the 595. They challenged the INA alert, and it was a pretty large piece of that 595, so.
Okay. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Roger.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. And so, approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokisch, and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. We do have to approve that because it isn't a donation. But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Allison. All favor, raise your hand. Motion passes.
So then you took my agenda and as all descriptions. I can get it.
Nope.
Oh.
I got it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anybody ready?
We're ready.
Are you gonna hold up? Roger.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. So first thing, approval of the agenda. Is there any additions working?
No.
Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Chad, second by Cameron. All favor raised your hand. Motion passes. And approval of the July minutes. Any changes from the board? Done, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Motion by Roger, second by Cameron. All favor raised your hand. Motion passes. And treasures report. As an attachment. Any questions, comments? Done, entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Allison. All favor raised your hand. Motion passes. And invoices. Any comments or questions, or any that we need to go over?
No, they're a little bit high because, you know, we had to pay 50% of the INA, that is the security and so forth that was approved previously, but we had to come up with 50%, which at this point, we haven't got our plan approved. Then we had to do our insurance, which was really high too. So those two items are in the vast majority of those invoices. What was the insurance on that?
158.
158 was just the insurance. So that was out of the 324. So it was a little bit inflated with those two big ones on there this time.
When are they supposed to start off?
They said that the material should be here on August 17th. For INA.
Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor raised your hand. Motion passes. And reconciliation.
That was an attachment as well. The cash summer report, any cash balance matches the cash in the fee, which matches the treasures report that Stephanie prepared. Just so you know, darling came in and helped her with it. It took him a little while because the summer ones are always so much more difficult than during the year. But I told her not to get discouraged, it'll get better as time goes on. But she did her fine job, so it could kind of work out fine.
And again, on the SIR, cash balance is pretty large negative because we haven't been approved yet. So, and any title federal is a reimbursement, so you can run negative in those funds. We have discussed. Because they, at this point, it looks like we will not get that through till October now. Because they did not get it in this budget. So hopefully, we'll get it approved in and we can access it in October. We probably got to request state aid to cover cash, just for cash flow, other than that.
And that's Fund 78 on that, our summer. You can see that's in the negative. So that INA alert came out of there, summer school came out of there, after school program came out of there. So, yeah.
I'm still working on, I had to do three altercations about really a lot of information. So, you know, I gave them some information and so forth. So hopefully, we get it approved this time.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Nobody.
And COVID protocol?
So, kind of after school nurses, just to kind of see because we thought parents would have questions about. Protocol, as you can see, it's pretty, you know, it's same vaccinated or unvaccinated. Recommendation, five days. Isolation, if you have it. If you don't have symptoms or fever, return. Mask is optional, if you want to do that. Contact tasting is responsibility of a positive person, not the school district. We will send you home. If you have symptoms, but we will offer, if they want, to test to stay or test to play. We have that ability. At the request of the parents.
And last year, this was like three pages long, so.
I was gonna ask if this is different.
Way different, way shorter.
Way shorter.
There's not, other than five days, it's bad.
I'll move to approve. Motion, second?
Second, let's.
Chad.
Chad, thank you.
Any further discussion? If you're none, all favor raised your hand. Motion passes. And SIR three.
So I kind of reviewed a little bit of that, just of those cash balances. But so I had to respond to, they did not have a response to our underserved kids, homeless, at risk. And so we really didn't identify those in our 83 responses we got back. So I just had to say, they are within our 83 responded. So I had to copy that and put it into a different line item on the narrative. And then also, they wanted to know. On the 20% for loss of learning, I had to identify research-based criteria that we were using to determine kids' loss of learning and so forth. And I had to use our, all of our things like FastBridge. What else? I can't remember off the top of my head what we used besides FastBridge, but.
Probably Lexia.
Lexia reading, yeah. Pathways to reading.
Pathways to reading.
So I had, and those are research-based, so I had to add those. And then they, because it said fate detectors on that one deal, so I just took it off. That was going to be a problem. Just left the description. So those are the three things I changed on the application. Hopefully, it'll get approved. They called me two hours after we missed getting on the state board's agenda. Because noon was the cutoff, they called me like 2 o'clock.
Yeah.
And I said, you missed it, so we gotta wait another month. So, hopefully, we'll get it approved and we'll go through that. So, that's where we are, the 595. They challenged the INA alert. And it was a pretty large piece of that 595, so.
Okay. And so approval of the chief donations, we have two, Alan and Michelle Brokish and Mike and Stephanie Peterman. Do you have to approve that, because it isn't a donation? But first of all, I'd like to thank both of them for that. It's a big donation and a big help.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Roger. All favor raised your hand. Motion passes.
I'm real.
Oh, I was gonna skip apparently. So we do need 2.2 board members for the Hall of Fame Committee. Would anybody like to jump up and volunteer?
It was Chad and Chandler last year.
So it's gonna be the last couple of years.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Tamara, Chad, both? Okay now.
Okay. I move that the board go into executive sessions, discuss the treaty negotiations, discuss the negotiation offers, and to protect the district's right to confidentiality and its negotiation position. Negotiating matters in public interest under the exception of employer employee negotiations under comma, and that we return the open session in this room at 7:35. Sorry, 6:35.
Yeah, 6:30.
With Superintendent Bellower and John Sherman.
Motion is their second. All second. Second by Josh, all favor raised your hand. Motion passes.
We are back in open session. Is there any action from the board?
I'll make a motion that we have really negotiated agreement as presented.
Motion, seconded by Josh. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor raise your hand. Motion passes.
I move that the board go into executive session pursuant to Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss non-elected personnel for the topics of substitutes, resignation, cert. good staff, supplementals, classified staff and administrative staff to protect the privacy of individuals. It turned to open session in this room at 6:50. With Superintendent Bill Lowery and John Sherman being the candidates.
Our motion is there second. Second, everybody chat, all in favor raise your hand. Motion passes. And supplementals.
I would approve the additional supplemental as presented.
Motion. Second by Josh, all in favor raise your hand. Motion passes. And classified staff.
I would approve the classified staff, they as presented.
Second. Second by Allison, all in favor raise your hand. Motion passes. And administrative staff.
Okay, I got a question.
Which motion?
The classified staff, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There's two motions.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, one is to approve the raise and the other one is to approve those positions.
So we did the, we did the raise.
Raise, okay, thank you.
There's two positions here we need to fill.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
I would approve, move that we approve Alexis Blackwood, transportation special ed aide, and Tammy Fallett, Wilson assistant court.
Good motion. Second by Josh, all in favor raise your hand. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administrative staff.
I'll move that the administrative staff is be for the as presented.
Good motion, seconded by Josh, all in favor raise your hand.
Josh?
Motion passes. And, got those?
I think I got them.
Perfect. And moving on to board member reports.
Included that in case someone had something, especially if you're doing, for instance, Hall of Fame, or Special Ed, or if you're on a committee or something with the board that could report back legislative. At some point, we got three people going to the convention, they'll probably want to report back to when they come and stuff, so. I just put that down, we won't always have items, but if you, there is something you'd like to report on, that'd be great.
Anybody jumping up there?
Any development anywhere in that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Roger, we are waiting on Silvan to have their community meeting, which is the...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
I will, as soon as I have an update, I'm gonna guess that we'll probably have that preliminary group have a discussion on process and stuff. I think there's a group of three and three and super teams. As soon as I know something, I'll get that out to everybody.
Thank you. Okay. And administrative report.
Jane, you wanna go first?
Sure. See a graph there of my attendance for this year. Up in head count, we have a few more that still need to come and enroll, but we're expecting them to come in. And also, from a year ago, our head count's up 15. You can see quite a bit of that's in our preschool three, we bumped up five there. And on some of the classes picked up one or two, and a few stayed the same, so. Number's up a little bit there, which is nice. And enrollment went very smooth, and all the two days that we had it. And then our state assessments, this is what we give every year, March, April. And part of our KISA process that we go through, where it shows, and this is for reading, this is my, I should've put that on there. This is for reading, I should've put poly math on there too. But this just shows you in levels three and four, that's the highest, two levels. And that's kind of where the state pushes us to get as larger percentage of kids up in there. And levels one and two would be our lower levels. So we track for our KISA process, you know, what, how we're doing. And you see, last year, we had 43% in levels one and two, and 57% in levels three and four. And I always caution people, this is one assessment, not all kids test well. You know, it's, it's one piece of the pie for our kiddos, so. Any questions on the assessments? And then just a few things, coming up, this Friday, I'll meet with new teachers in the district, the 15th, our staff, all staff is back. I'll have my faculty meeting on Tuesday, and then we go to Wilson for a half-day training pertaining to structured literacy. The state requires that we have, you know, the dyslexia bill passed a few years back, and so each year, we have to continue to have some training of some sort. And so structured literacy catches that. And then on the 17th, we'll have a parent meet and greet, where parents and students are welcome to come in the building, meet their teachers, see their classroom, kind of a meet and greet, come and go this year. We start already on August 18th, the half a day, and already on September 7th, we're rolling on a field trip, so, to bring you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our bank statements and balance, they're all match and balanced, our gym floors are done here in Hollyrood, and both the classrooms at the Grand Canyon High School. Buildings are basically done, there's a few little maintenance things that Tim's still working on. As Jane said, the 18th's our first half-day for students, 19th's the first full day. Enrollment went pretty smooth, with a new secretary and the old secretary helping, that helped tremendously. But went through very well, we are at 129, which is up 10 from last year. 14 seniors, 11 juniors, 25 sophomores, 24 freshmen, 22 eighth graders, 31 seventh graders. We have four new students, we lost seven students, but we're still up 10. We are. We still have, like Jane said, I have a few yet to enroll. We contacted everybody on our list today, and still planning on coming, last night, they, what they told us. And I still don't have a junior, junior high cheerleading sponsor. So if any of you have any desire, Diane needs an application from me.
Don't phone to me.
No, 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 I'm Diane, I'm saying, if any of you are working.
I've been a junior high cheerleader before. Took my turn, everybody needs to take a turn.
There you go. Like Jane said, my state assessment graphs, the blue are the ones and twos. The oranges are the threes and fours, our ELA percentages in 2021 were 67, one and two, 33, three and fours. 68 in 2022, one and two, 32, three and fours. These are different grade, are different students that have the same, 10th grade and 10th grade, not 12th grade and 11th grade. It's always the 10th grade. So it's different students, so, but we're still maintaining pretty, pretty close. Math, I didn't realize until after I had made the graph, that the 10th grade results will not be published until October. I forgot that, so this is just one year of, or well, it's, in 2021, that is 7, 8, and 10 data. So 71 in one and two, 29 in three and four. In 2022, that's just 7th and 8th grade data, so it's not an accurate comparison. Science, in 2021, 64% in one and two, 36 in three and four, and 22, 73 in 27. Still above the state average on the state assessments, so. That's something that I feel good about whenever I look at that, so. August 15th will be the first day for high school and middle school practice. I'll have numbers for football, volleyball, and it's across country at September meeting. 16th is fall sports meeting at 6 o'clock, and then we'll have, jump right into parent orientation at 7, where parents can go around and, and see their kids' classes. 28th, we'll have a football jamboree at Claflin, with Central Plains, Otis, Spearville, and La Crosse. And then the 27th, is our kickoff of activities, JV volleyball at Nest City, and then everything goes nuts the next week at 29. So, it'll get busy real quick, so, any questions?
So, I'm emailing our support on this, he said he doesn't know why it's going up, down, he's monitoring, it's went off, he's gonna put us on a new server tonight, he said, but can't figure it out, we're having trouble, but anyway, mine went off, I do have some, yeah. So I've got kids stuff, he's, he's gone today, I told him I'd help report, so the enrollment at Wilson is 90 in the elementary and 69 at the high school, which is one less than last year. Remember, these enrollments are not official till September 20th, they could go up or they could go down from now. So that's important to know, so overall, district-wide, we're gonna be up at this point of enrollment. We'll see what September 20th brings and where we're at there. Also included, results, state results, several of these classes, so if they're 10 or less, they do not give you class results, because it's too easy to identify, so. They're included in the total. What I was impressed, and I went on the back page, so, for instance, in English, most of our classes are a lot higher than the state percentage in three and four, so that's gonna be our goal. Because in the funding bill, we have to present all this information on assessments for the budget purposes, so that's what we're doing tonight. There are a few that are close, but there's several of them, and go district-wide on them too, is that we exceed the state average. A vast majority, a few, there is a few, but the general statement is, we are above the state average. At the same token, we still need to address, try to get all students, which, I don't like that word, all. I wanna see all students improve, but the goal is to get, the legislature wants more kids in the three and four category instead of the one and two. And for the most part, we have a vast majority that are in the three and four. Level two is still grade level, but they think three and four is college level. The data tells us that we only need about 42 to 45% of our kids with a four-year degree now. Cause a lot of things that you could do with very good paying jobs, you don't need a four-year degree. You can either get a certificate, a one- or two-year degree. I know if you were a pole climber for utility, that's a good job. If you wanna travel, you have a really good job. So, it's important to know that, and that's what we try to do with our, when we give kids career exploration, they can see what those jobs are, so. I will tell you right now, that as a district, I'm pretty impressed with the overall, our state assessments, I think they're pretty good. Again, we have one or two areas that maybe we need to work on, and we need to help those classes get a little bit better. But overall, if you look at our district, if we're not right at the state average, we're above the state averages with the percentage of kids in level three and four. And that's not, that's in every building, that's in every building, cause I looked at the school, district-wide compared to state. So, I just think that, you know, I was pleased with that, because I could tell you I wouldn't have, it's not that good, okay? So, real happy with that, I think, you know, I can't say, I'm not gonna say, well, we're happy with what we have, not trying to get, keep getting better, that's what we're gonna try to do, is keep improving, and helping kids and so forth, so. You have all the Wilson results in that data base. So on my report, as you know, in September, we will be having the revenue neutral hearing first, followed by the budget hearing, okay? And part of the budget hearing is, number one, we do have to look at state assessments, which we, that's before you tonight. We'll also look at needs assessment by the buildings, that will be presented on September meeting as consideration of our budget process, okay? That'll be coming up in September. And if you have questions, maybe I better stop, is there any questions about the state assessments, or something that you'd like to see additional to that, those state assessments? I know we kind of gave you building levels, it's a lot easier to give you building levels, because we don't want anything identifiable, but we know, we, we get the information, it's actually broken down by student, correct me, the student, we know where every student is. So we can address by student, or we can address by class, or by content, because we know it's student class content in all of our state assessments. Okay. Roof repairs, this, this roof has been completed, they did, it's painted, it is, you know, it blends really well. They're up to Wilson, should complete that this week unless the weather is disrupting to them, or the wind. Every time the wind shifts, they come out and say, hey, move your cars, because they don't want that to drift over on the vehicles and stuff, but they should have that done this week. The compressors have been installed in Wilson, and when I was there Friday, it was still 80 degrees in the office, I think. So, EPM is to be here Tuesday, it was supposed to be morning, I think I just saw an email that it's gonna be afternoon. And I hope Train will be here at the same time, so they can get those controls figured out, under control. I've also talked to Train about this building, Train has this building under controls, and I don't think it's, it needs some review, cause there's zones that don't cool the same. And I don't know that we have enough training for people to run the controls, so, I'm trying to get them to train, to kind of give us some training, so people here can run controls. I know, and some rooms get real kind of cooler, and some rooms are still warm, so, we just need to get that figured out. Wilson needs to be figured out, I mean, we have, what, seven rooftops up there, should get that one, we need to get it set. We will be moving tomorrow. Got to call one of the other buildings, cause we, our phone will be out of commission in the morning, we'll pick our phones up and move it, it's all set up, so it's ready to go. The fence around the bleachers, for safety for spectators, and Claflin is underway, should be completed before our first game, that's our hope. We do have an opening for that bus driver in the Bushen area, so. Still, we had advertised, and we're still looking to fill that, kind of fill it temporarily with some substitutes at this time. We still need a special education teacher, we need some Paris, we're still looking. So, those are some business issues we still have to fill. Diane and I will be meeting with Graduation Alliance on August 16th, to review some issues and where we're at, and also, this is the last year of a three-year contract, to start looking and preparing information to see where we're at into this year and what we recommend, so. That is my report, if any questions for me?
Thank you. You're gonna have to help me out though, cause I don't have much agenda anymore.
Yeah. Well, you're about that. That's the way my key back on.
Any open agenda? And items for next month? Do you have any of those?
Oh, yeah, next month, we're gonna have the budget hearing, of course, and the revenue neutral rate hearing, they'll just be back-to-back. We'll have some personnel hopefully to approve, Irene Nova substitute that didn't get in on the list in time, and then maybe we will have a bus driver hopefully to recommend. And then policy renew, board policy review, that was the June 30th, they do it June 30th, and they do it in June and December, so this would be the June recommendations. And there were so many law changes in the legislature, that all of this budget update has to do with the legislature changing that specific law. So, there's gonna be quite a few.
Policy updates this time, it's probably the largest I've ever seen.
Yeah, it's, that's probably why it's procrastination. But we'll get it, we will get it, cause we wanna get it done before December, when the new one, other ones come out. And I can't think of anything else for September that I know of. The meeting will be, oh, yours is back up, the meeting will be at Claflin, and it will be in the cafeteria, since we're having the budget hearing, we'll probably expect a little bit more people there, I'm not sure. But we're hoping, once the district office is done, then we will have our meetings at the district office, and we have a conference room, so. That's the plan, see what happens.
Thank you. If nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Josh. Second by Allison, all in favor of Adrian, motion passes. Thanks, everybody.